All right, I'd like to call to order this June 30, 2020, meeting of the Richland Two Board of Trustees. If I can please have a motion to go into executive session.
Mr. Chair, I move that we convene in executive session for the purpose of discussing the superintendent's evaluation, a personnel update, and legal update.
Motion's been made by Dr. Caution Parker, seconded by Ms. Mackey. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, if we'll please have the vote. Ms. Sherman, who are we waiting on?
I am waiting on Dr. Holmes, Dr. Caution Parker, and Dr. Elkins Johnson.
Okay, it hasn't shown up on mine.
Mine either.
Okay, if we can just do a voice vote, everyone in favor. Monica, if you're on mute.
Aye.
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 All right, motion passes unanimously. We will now move into executive session. Thank you. Okay, I'd like to reconvene the June 30, 2020 regularly scheduled board meeting for the Richland Two Board of Trustees. We just returned from executive session where we discussed the items that were mentioned in the motion to go into executive session. That was convened at 4:51 with a motion by Ms. Mackey and a second by Mr. Shad with unanimous vote from the board. At this time, we'll have the inspirational moment. For that, we will just have a moment of silence. Thank you, and we'll now have the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, I will now have a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Mackey.
I move to approve the agenda for the June 30th, 2020 regular board meeting of the Richland Two School Board of Trustees.
Thank you. Motion's been made by Ms. Mackey. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Shad. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Ms. Agostini.
Thank you. I just wanted to state for the record that last Thursday, June 25th, I did send in a request to have public participation, a vote added to the agenda, and that request was not approved. I would just like that to be put on the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, yes, Ms. Dr. Elkins Johnson.
Ms. Agostini just said it wasn't approved. It would take a vote on that, or what do you mean it wasn't approved? I was not aware of that.
There was an email sent by Ms. Agostini requesting that be put on the agenda after our last meeting. And I did not add it to the agenda. We had already established the agenda. We had a lot of items on the agenda, and I did not, I communicated to Dr. Davis that I was not going to add it to this meeting.
Well, just a question. Is that a board chair decision or is that a decision by the entire board that we vote on an agenda item? I think when we decided to take it off, we said that we will have a discussion about it. So I don't understand why it wasn't put on and let us as board members vote on it instead of one person here making that decision.
Because it was sent after the last meeting, so there wasn't an opportunity for a board vote. So I was asked as the board chair, which our policy does allow me to add items as the board chair in conjunction with the superintendent. I did not add it. Doesn't mean it won't ever be added, but I did not add it to this agenda. So when we get to that portion of our meeting where we discuss the agenda for the next meeting, we can have it requested and the board can vote on it.
Okay, okay, thank you.
All right, any further discussion? Okay, with that, we'll have the vote, please.
Mr. Chair, I don't have a pop-up, but I'm voting in the affirmative.
Yeah, I didn't either. Let's see, try to give it another second. Ms. Sherman, I assume it's been put through, just isn't popping up. Um, okay. Ms. Sherman, are you there?
I don't believe she is back on. Mr. Manning, give me a, if you'll give me a minute, let me text her, okay?
Okay. If y'all can just hold for me for a second. Normally I would move forward, but our next items are voting items, so I don't feel there's any need to rush.
She's trying to reestablish the connection, Mr. Manning.
Okay.
I appreciate your patience. I apologize for the delay.
No, absolutely. These are unprecedented times, and we're all working together. Do we have, um, Jill, are you taking, is Jill taking minutes today?
I think she is, Mr. Chair. Also, this, this meeting, I think we have the ability, if it's not being, I believe it is, being recorded. So we're able to go back and review the meeting and make sure we have accurate notes.
Okay, that's fine. So let's all do a voice vote. We'll go ahead and move forward with the meeting, and we can go back to if we need to. So all in favor of approval of the agenda, if you would please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All against?
Nay.
So the meet, it passes six to one with Ms. Agostini being the nay. Only saying that, Ms. Agostini, just for, to make sure we get it on record.
Very good.
Um, so, all right, we're going to move on now to the consent agenda. If I can please have a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Ms. Agostini.
I move to approve the consent agenda for the June 30th, 2020 board meeting.
Motion's been made by Ms. Agostini. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Holmes. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, if we'll please voice vote again. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, executive session items, item 6 dot 1, the superintendent's evaluation. If I can please have a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Mackey.
After reviewing Dr. Dave, can you hear me?
Yes.
After reviewing Dr. Davis's report on the district's progress and considering the board members' comments regarding Dr. Davis's performance, I move that we conclude as a board that Dr. Davis receive an overall distinguished evaluation for the 2019-2020 school year. Dr. Davis's evaluation level reflects the highest category of performance. I further move that as a result of Dr. Davis's overall distinguished evaluation, that Dr. Davis's employment contract with the district be extended one year through June 30th, 2024.
Motion's been made by Ms. Mackey. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Shad. Is there any discussion? All right, with no discussion, oh, Ms. Agostini?
Yeah, I just, I would like to make just a couple of comments. First of all, I've been very pleased with how Dr. Davis's performance in handling the global pandemic. But with that said, I knew it's, I need to express my concerns with Dr. Davis's lack of equitable treatment of board members. Since my resignation as board secretary in May of 2019, Dr. Davis has treated my communications with him as a board member in an inequitable and unprofessional manner. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Okay, and I will state for the record that I don't necessarily agree with Ms. Agostini, but, but I appreciate that being on the record. So with that, we'll please have the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes six to one with Ms. Agostini being the nay. Um, item 6 dot 2 is not needed. There was no other items up for vote from executive session. Um, and that leaves us 7 dot 1, old business action requested, policy approval, CCA, Dr. Davis.
Members of the, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and to our viewing, community partners, teachers, and administrators, we are presenting before you this afternoon for your approval, the policy CCA, which is our organizational chart and structure. As you remember, we've added an organization, CCA dash R, which is the actual chart of, for our org structure. And so we have a written policy now that specifically outlines what the organizational structure should look like as far as the purpose of requiring superintendent to consult with the board prior to changing the organizational structure of the school district. And so that information that was shared with the board, the consult consultation was done, and here is the resulting organizational structure from the administrative rule. We're now asking for the approval of the administrative rule. Does not require board approval, however, the policy CCA does. And so we're bringing this policy before you, for your approval. This is the second reading of this policy.
All right, if I could please have a motion?
Policy, and here's the policy, and for those who may not have an opportunity to see that policy, I hope it's large enough for everyone to see. If it's not, I'll share briefly, quickly what it states. It says the superintendent is required to develop the district's organization chart. The chart depicts the reporting relationship between the board, the superintendent, senior administrators, and senior staff. At least annually, the superintendent will consult with the board and reevaluate the chart to ensure the administrative structure is aligned with the district's needs, the supervision, and accountability.
All right, if I can please have a motion on this item? And I can't see everybody right now, so speak up.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Ms. Mackey.
I move to approve the revision to policy CCA, the organization charts.
Thank you. I have a motion made by Ms. Mackey. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Holmes. All right, open it up for discussion. Any discussion? Dr. Elkins?
Just a question. I know Dr. Davis mentioned that this is an administrative rule, but is this still something that the board will, whether or not this organization chart is effective? Or is it something that you would just share with us, but we don't have any say-so in it?
You have, that's a great question, Dr. Elkins Johnson. What the board has is to say so in the policy, but of course, the consult, the superintendent would need, be required to consult with the board regarding the, the chart. So if there's any organ, actual change to the structure or the board size that we need to make some, some, some assessments or adjustments to that, then we will come together as a team to decide what those, what would be appropriate. And then we would develop a new, a new chart.
Okay, okay, thank you.
This allows or requires that we revisit this chart every year. In the past, we have not been required to do so. And so although we may have not updated the policy, we have made changes, but we have never updated the chart. This requires that if we make a change, we have, we have to do this every year so that this stays updated.
Okay, and just one more question. So the changes cannot be made unless there is a majority vote of the board? Am I understanding that correctly?
And as far as the reporting, those who are reporting to the superintendent, as far as I understand, so we're talking specifically that, that direct reports to the superintendent.
But I want, I want to be clear though, Dr. Elkins, the board would not vote on the, on the administrative rule, correct, Dr. Davis? We would consult, you would consult with us, but we would not vote on that.
But you would vote on the policy.
Yeah, help me understand the administrative rule according to this policy, so I can make sure I'm clear on what I'm voting on.
The administrative, so the chart has always been the administrative, basically has always been the administrative rule.
Okay.
When the old policy, when you went to this policy, when you went to CCA, there was no words. It was just a link that said, go to this chart.
Okay.
That was what was there. So what we did was put an actual policy in place with words that required us to revisit this policy, revisit this every, annually, every year. So if I was going to make some changes, I wouldn't need to come back to the board and say, hey, I think we need to be more efficient, or this is what we need to do. I would bring that back to you.
Okay, thank you for that clarification, Dr. Davis.
Okay. Other questions or comments? Ms. Agostini?
I have, I have some concerns with this, and I, I just think about, you know, our May meeting, special call board meeting, May 19th, when Dr. Miley said, you know, essentially I took from it, get ready to buckle down, based with so much uncertainty, not necessarily this year, but in the 20, 2021, 2020 school year, we could see some attrition and some R I riffing due to budget constraints. So for me, looking at this diagram, it seems like we are adding another level of management at our highest level when most companies at this point, and based in our economic situation, are actually reducing. And I'm not suggesting to be rid of any employees, but I'm certainly not in favor of adding an additional management line. And then secondly, my other big point is, I believe, and I didn't check the link, but that the board should have a say in the organizational chart. We were not elected to be consultants. We were elected to be governing board. So I will not support this policy. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Go ahead.
No, go ahead, Dr. Lewis.
I would just like to state for the record, because there's a clearly inattentive narrative, to create a narrative that the district office is very top-heavy in Richland School District, too. I don't know who's the culprit behind creating this narrative, but this narrative is false, and this is not true. We had an efficiency study done in our district back in 2017. One of the results from the efficiency study demonstrated that Richland Two is, has always been lean when it comes to administration. So, so much so that we have been able to be very fiscally responsible. It is a little bit disheartening when I hear about things like that, when we have been able to demonstrate that as, as our approach to our fiscal, to our approaches of being fiscally responsible, we have been able to do some extraordinary things in this school district with less or, or at least number of, a smaller number of administrators, as well as being able to continue to contribute to our fund balance, as well as be able to do other things in our school district. I have made it quite, quite clear that we are not creating or adding an additional FTE. The district and the superintendent has afforded a certain number of FTEs at the district office level. So if I was adding an FTE that did not exist, I would totally agree with that statement. But to repurpose an already approved FTE, to me, to stand in the way of that just seems to be counterproductive to try to achieve the overall goal of, of what the district administration wants to be able to do. We want to be able to create a structure that is efficient and effective. From that efficiency study, one of the recommendations was for the district to grow the district-level administrative, administration responsibly. That's been since 2017, and that's what we have attempted to do. One of the responsible ways of growing district-level administration is using vacant positions or unfilled FTEs and converting them, as opposed to coming back to the board and asking the board for an additional FTE. When you do that, that's when the board has the ability to say, no, we will not grant you an additional FTE, because you have to have board approval to add an additional FTE to a budget. But we're not doing that. We're taking an already existing FTE and re-appropriating this. This happens all the time. It also happens at the school level, where positions at the school level are converted to something else, depending on the needs of that, of that principal. So that position may have been a science position, and now you don't necessarily need that science position. Now you need a social studies position, or you may had a fifth grade, a fifth grade teacher, and now you don't need additional fifth grade teacher, you need additional fourth grade teacher. We've, this is just, this is best and common practices. So I just want to put that out, that this district administration is not growing and counter that negative narrative that wants, that, that, that is attempting to be shared by many or a few, I should say, in our district, that we're trying to grow this district level, go to district office, and make it top-heavy, because that is absolutely not true.
Ms. Agostini, you have additional question? You're on mute.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, just an additional comment. When we're talking about repurposing, I specifically asked, do we no longer need a hearing officer last time? And at the time, we didn't, but it was stated, but if we do, then we'll just use contract services. To me, that's just shifting funds. Thank you.
Well, we were unable to fill the hearing officer position last year. So we had a hearing officer position vacant for an entire year and was unable to fill that, fill that vacancy or fill that position all of last year. And so, but that would be in an administrative decision. I think if for some reason we can't, if we can't, we can't handle the number of hearings that we have, hopefully, with our approach to reduce the number of suspensions and expulsions in our school district, because we continue to do that, we won't need an additional hearing officer as we're moving forward. But if for some reason we do, and I have to come back to the board, I've stand ready for, for you or any other member of the board to say, no, we want to approve an additional FTE or growth position to be able to do that, because you allocated those funds or you reallocated that position. That was a decision you decided to make as a superintendent, so we're going to have to live with that decision. However, to make a decision to simply say that we're adding a position at this time, which is just not true, it does appear that we're, by splitting this position, we're adding, but we're not. I'm converting the assistant superintendent position and taking the hearing officer's position and creating two new positions, and all of these positions, and I can't state this more emphatically, and I hope teachers are watching, and I hope the public is watching, I can't state this even more emphatically. These positions are all positions that are allocated to the district office. They are not being taken from schools. They are not impacting the positions that will be allocated to schools to reduce student-teacher ratios. We continue to work hard to reduce those ratios for our teachers and provide them with services. This gives us an opportunity to help us continue to grow our leadership level to make sure that we are also managing the task and, and the task and challenges of running a school district with 28,000 students. So if you compare our number of administrators to other school districts that have similar types of numbers, we're one of the, the fifth largest school district in the state. I don't think that we are obsessed absurdly out of pocket or out of, of too far from the standard deviation of what is average for the number of administrators at the district level.
Thank you. Board members, other questions or comments?
Mr. Chair, I have a question. I'd like to call the questions.
Thank you. Okay, if we can please have the vote at this time. And Tamika, or Ms. Sherman is back, so we should get a pop-up. Actually, I feel like my screen is frozen from the last vote that I took.
Mr. Manning, would you like me to redo? Did everyone receive a pop-up?
I did not. Did anybody else?
No, I got the pop. I did.
Yeah, I did and voted.
Okay, I'm actually trying to join back the meeting again, so maybe I need to rejoin.
I actually have a vote recorded for you, Mr. Manning. I do not have a vote recorded for Dr. Caution Parker and Dr. Elkins.
Okay, yeah, I got a pop-up.
I didn't vote either, Tamika.
Okay, I'm going to close it out and, and open it back up.
Daddell, he has a question. She has her hand raised.
No, I think everybody's voting right now, because the, the screen, let's just do another voice vote. Everybody in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye. I'm a nay.
A nay? Okay, so it passes six to one with Ms. Agostini voting nay. Um, and, all right, so next we have 8 dot 1, an update on capital improvement, Dr. Davis.
And thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, to the members of our board, to our viewing public and partners, to our teachers and administrators that are watching via Facebook or Zoom or wherever you're watching, we have Mr. Will Anderson with us this afternoon, this evening, to share with us information regarding capital improvement updates. Mr. Anderson, are you on board? Yes, sir. Good to see you.
Yep, I'm here. Good to see everyone. Hopefully you can hear me okay. Want to do a brief update. We haven't done this in a few months with COVID. We've had a consent agenda every month, but we haven't given you all a, a live presentation for you all and for our general public. In your board packet, there were much more detailed information to accompany this very high-level presentation, which really is focusing more on pictures and information, so you can get much more detailed information in your, in the part of the agenda. Today, we've done a, a good bit of work that is complete. All of our front entrances are done. The Dent Middle School roof finished last week, and Artilia Bus Hub expansion is finished as well. We've also are working very hard this summer in construction projects, renovations at multiple sites that will be done this summer. Some roofs will be done, as well as the, some other security projects at five of our locations. The picture on the screen in the right is the, is a bathroom addition at Lake Carolina Lower. Blithwood High School is well under construction. These, these photos here kind of give an idea of the expansion that's going on, the site work. A lot of site work right now. Right now, it's on time for completion in the summer of 2021 and getting the utilities all squared away at Blithwood High School. CFK North is, is moving along very well. These pictures show the roof almost all the way on. By this time, it actually may be completely on the building, finishing out the windows, getting those in. So we're almost at a place where they call it kind of roughed in, where we're got CFK North in. So it is moving along well. It should be done by January, February of 2021. Projects moving along smoothly. Stadium or Richland Northeast, you can see some photos here of the site work, getting the utilities set up, getting the foundations laid. This kind of gives you an idea of the three different angles of the expansion of the fieldhouse, the stadium expansion, the drives. If you've ridden by here, it's, it's a big difference of what it used to look like. Ridgeview, similar situation. You can kind of see the, the site work is underway. You can see on the picture to your right is where the gym expansion, or a weight room expansion, I should say, will be in the gym expansion out of the front of the, of the gym. And those two projects are on track to be finished in the spring of 2021. The turf started after graduation. The two pictures on your left are from Westwood High School. The two pictures on your right are from Spring Valley High School. Those are moving along. Where Blithwood High is a, is a slightly delayed just because of some soil issues at Westwood High School. But as soon as they get those rectified, they'll be moving to Blithwood in the next week or so to start that. At this point, no impacts to, to delays that we are aware of, based on our original schedule. Bethel Hanbury, these are some images of Bethel Hanbury. We are well into past design development, working on construction documents now. These are some interior images. The, the top left is a, is an image of a rendering of the cafeteria. The bottom left would be the performance space. Top right would be the learning. The bottom left would be the performance space, uh, top right would be the learning hat, learning hubs inside the classrooms. Uh, outside the classroom additions in the bottom right would be the rendering of the media center. Uh, construction is scheduled to start breaking ground in uh, late October at Bethel Hanbury. E O right and CFK, this is um, uh, going well as also looking at a January start date with possible early demo construction beginning in the fall. Um, you see some uh, pictures here of the exterior of CFK and E O right. Picture on top right is the second floor, looking at a learning stair in the media center. And your bottom right is looking in the the hallway of the the collaborative space uh, in the classrooms. The next picture shows the uh, um, picture on the left would be your cafeteria space, the shared space between CFK and E O right. They would use that with a multipurpose room with a debatable wall, learning hub lab in the top right of CFK North and the gymnasium in your bottom right rendering. Forest Lake is also looking for a fall um, uh, construction. We're looking at demo as early as August on the Brookfield Road building and the gymnasium. You can see the bot- the bottom picture shows an outside rendering of the new front entrance of the school. Um, the top uh, left would be where you walk into the school, taking on the idea of a planetarium kind of field and that really incorporating NASA. And then your right would be, top right would be looks of of rendering of the interior courtyard. Uh, this um, Rissland Northeast and Ridgeview interior renovations are moving, are moving along really well as uh, great as well with some uh, pre uh, early site, early packages for both schools, uh, RNA being the roof and HVAC. Ridgeview uh, HVAC is early as um, Aug- uh, September for both of those. And then moving into the interior renovations, um, right after that, um, you can see on the left a rendering of the addition of the uh, renovate outside renovation to the auditorium at Rissland Northeast. And on the right, you can see the additions uh, to the um, auditorium with a new in plaza entrance um, for Ridgeview um, uh, into their auditorium and their uh, their arts space. Well, we are still uh, early in the design process of performing art center, but this is kind of gives you a, at least a programmatic look of where the potentially performing art center will be located on the campus of R two Y two. Um, and you can see on the right, the image of what it may look like in terms of the interior. Um, we're still getting through that, but we we feel like we're making very good progress on performing arts. Uh, Johnson Control Projects are moving smoothly. The uh, HVAC replacements are well underway. You can see some images there of that construction. The lighting is is uh, working through several schools that we've already updated the lighting and a lot of schools have gotten their building envelope, meaning we've secured uh, cracks and things like that at the school. Buses, uh, we're still waiting to get those in. They'll be in um, this summer. IT projects continue with the uh, display replacement and the camera project will come soon. Uh, we're, all of our uh, contractors are following the same guidelines in turn turns to COVID nineteen. You can see on the the image of the hand washing stations, the reminders, the wear mask, et cetera. So we are um, holding our our contractors accountable uh, for their uh, the safety that, but we hold each of our employees accountable. To this date, we've spent seven, uh, I'm sorry, from not to this actual date, but as of June, seven percent of our total budget. And right now our projects are on our current timeline. As always, to the public, um, all of our uh, information is up to date uh, monthly. Um, and thanks to the communication staff for for doing a job of keeping all of our pictures and 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 things there. And you can see all of our information on on our website. Do you have any questions? I'd be happy to answer those. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Board members, questions or comments? Okay, thank you very much, Will. Thank you for all of the work y'all are doing. Um, it's great to see our projects continuing to move along, uh, even during this, this time. Um, Dr. Davis, eight dot two, a report on it, on on our data, data snapshot.
Hey, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, members of our board, to our viewing community as well. Viewing partners, we have Mr. John Arnold, who's gonna, Dr. John Arnold is gonna share with us um, some data information uh, regarding the third nine weeks. It's a a whole lot um, since we uh, had some interruptions and disruptions in our, in our learning process. Uh, but uh, we need to let, nonetheless, we still have some information that we'd like to share, make you prepared to, Dr. Arnold.
Thank you, Dr. Davis, uh, Mr. Manning, Dr. Davis, members of the board. Uh, this afternoon, it will be my pleasure to share a very brief data snapshot. As I've done in previous presentations, I'd like to remind you and in our audience of the two main goals that are included in the South Carolina Succeeds Accountability Legislation. You can see those goals here. Additionally, I'd like to remind everyone that South Carolina Accountability Plan does include two academic achievement subgoals. And in these presentations, at this point, I would normally present a few charts and graphs. But that won't happen this afternoon. As a result of a waiver from federally mandated assessments, there will be very little data to review in the coming months. Richland two students weren't able to participate in a few assessments before the closing of schools. Including the regular Saturday administrations of the ACT and the SAT. As well as the access for L's test of our English language learners. Those students in eleventh grade who selected the ACT as their state provided college readiness assessment were tested prior to the closing of schools. And also our students who enrolled in AP courses this year were able to take their AP exams online from home. But the majority of the accountability tests, including SC Ready, SC Pass and end of course tests, were waived. Kindergarten readiness assessment was administered in the fall, but the end of year KRA could not be completed, so it was waived as well. The state funded college and career readiness assessments that were not administered in the spring have been rescheduled for the fall of twenty twenty. Students would have taken these in the spring of their junior year will now take them in the fall of their senior year. And in addition to the waiver from assessments, we received a waiver from the accountability legislation and reporting requirements. Now, the Department of Education will still publish report cards this fall. But they will not include ratings from the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year. With no assessments, there's no ratings. Instead, they will report the ratings and assessment data from twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, the previous year. But Richland two schools will be writing new narratives to be reported on the new report cards. And before I get to your questions, I want to make sure that everybody is aware that Governor McMaster signed uh, House fifty two oh two in the law on June twenty fifth. Uh, that was last Thursday. As a result, the State Department of Education will seek a waiver from all federal accountability related testing requirements and concaminate accountability. School identification and reporting requirements for the twenty twenty, twenty one school year. Additionally, all state mandated public accountability testing requirements are suspended. Are there any questions?
Board members, questions or comments? All right. Thank you very much for that report. And we'll move on to item eight dot three, end of the year highlights, Dr. Davis. You're muted, Dr. Davis.
I'm off now. As always, share with staff. It works better when you're not on mute. Um, they can hear you a lot better. All right, looks like I was freezing up, but I think I'm good now. Um, Mr. Mr. Chair, members of the board, I have for you my annual twenty nineteen, twenty twenty year review. As you probably can imagine, most of the year review, or at least a quarter of it is related to COVID nineteen and I'm going to try to spare you the uh, the um, the um, revisiting all the information regarding COVID nineteen. Um, since I've been doing, updating you all on that uh, for the majority of uh, the last quarter of the school year. So we'll start off talking just a little bit about um, some basic um, numbers that we all should be aware of. Rissland School District two, pre-K to twelve, twelve. We have roughly twenty eight thousand five hundred and sixty five students in our school district this year. Uh, with twenty five hundred of those students being military connected and our free, our families at or below the poverty uh, line are are now hovering a little bit, almost about fifty five percent. Um, and so we have about fifty five percent of our students now qualified for being at or below poverty. Uh, we have about thirty seven hundred employees with the majority of those employees being certified staff. Uh, a hundred and thirteen hundred of them being support staff and about a hundred and forty a- administrators uh, throughout our district, um, with forty one schools and centers, uh, and an annual general fund budget of three hundred and one million dollars. Um, we started a year out, um, and I had an outstanding time and I appreciated the board members that came out to help um, in the hot sun. Um, uh, we were prepared uh, just to let uh, uh, Dr. EJ know and um, Ms. Mackey, I think uh, I I know um, Dr. Holmes was there. I think several of you all was there. Well, I was gonna make sure that we had a tent this year. It was hot. Uh, but I appreciate Mr. Shad, all of you all who were out there this year, helping with this, uh, kicking off this initiative of this backpack program. Uh, the Back to School Bash, uh, Rissland School District two was phenomenal. We had great uh, great support. It was our first opportunity as a school district uh, to have um, members of our community all together at one time um, to kind of kick off the start of school. Um, so that was one of our very first initiatives that really started us out this year. We transitioned into several initiatives, one also being the I Smile. This was a result of us trying to be consistent and making sure that we were um, having, we had a consistent practice when it comes to customer service in our school district. And so we created the I Smile Initiative that you can see posted at every uh, school in our district. Particularly in the receptionist, reception area and the main office areas where we making a pledge to uh, always smile, to strive to serve with excellence, to make a connection with those individuals that are with, that are in our presence. To impact someone's day positively, uh, to listen with compassion and to exceed the ex- in, to exceed expectations. And so this is something that was spearheaded by our um, our support staff, uh, actually took a lead on this uh, and came up with this um, with this initiative. And so we're really happy to see this in place and something we will continue to follow. Our Women in Leadership Series was something that was a part of one of the initiatives that we um, that we laid out at the beginning of the year. It was an opportunity for us to really focus on um, um, one, giving women who are in leadership a voice, but also bringing up the next generation of women leaders uh, here in the school district. And so we put together a um, a seminar, kind of a seminar setting where we had four different um, um, meetings um, that focus on different things. And I think I've shared a little bit about this. I know um, we've had several of our board members, Dr. Caution Parker was a part of sharing. We also had members from the community come in and be a part of sharing insight on what it takes to be um, a a true leader um, in this community, but also just in general and building those skill sets. So that went over fair, went over very well. Um, another initiative was the Propensity Partnership. Um, and if you're not aware, where a propensity is, something that I'm extremely fond of and and I think is extremely beneficial to our school and our school district in particular. You can go to propensity.com and what, and sign up. And what we've done as a school district is we have um, an ability, if we go to propensity.com, download the app and then um, what we can do is we can see who is in need in our school district. People are able to communicate with our social workers uh, and different administrators around the district and share with them what their needs may be, what their needs are. Any individual who has downloaded this on their phone can then see and pick what they want to find or contribute to to help a person in need in our school community. Uh, so whether it's purchasing a mattress for a bed, whether it's um, buying gym sneakers or clothes or a book bag or um, you know, uh, family, a dinner for a family, whatever it is that you may um, think will be beneficial. We've done all of those things uh, to uh, to assist our, our school district and our, members of our district and our community. So I really like Propensity. I I encourage you all to take, take, if you haven't done so, to download it to your phones and and uh, contribute to um, being a blessing to someone else in the, in our community. We started a podcast this year. I I, I enjoyed the podcast. And so it's a, it's something that I think the students in our district also enjoy. I had an opportunity to meet with um, at high school students from, one high school student from each of the five high schools. And we were able to talk about some real pressure issues. Now, um, all the podcasts took place prior to COVID. Um, so we were discussing things like safety and just um, safety in school, some of the bond projects that we were working on. Um, students' choice about where they were going to go to school next year. I had an opportunity to also meet with some teachers and have a podcast with them. We were working on the third podcast, which would allow our podcast to go uh, to the, to the Apple podcast. Got to have three um, for it to be available through Apple. So we were unfortunately cut short and was unable to do that by the end of the uh, school year, but I'm sure we'll be able to pick back up once we get an opportunity to do so. We designated for the first time this year kindness month and uh, and Rissland School District two, and kindness month is in September. Um, and uh, this is something I think we all um, continue to focus on and work on in our school district, continue this message of just being kind and having a kind heart uh, toward others, to be helpful and beneficial to our brothers and sisters uh, in the school district. It's something that we want to uh, continue to um, model for our students, the appropriateness of being kind to one another. Uh, and so kindness month was something that was launched this September. Um, and uh, it is a part of our continuous attempt to strive, our continuous efforts to strive to be premier. We continue to expand NMC as many of you know. Um, we expanded NMC this year to Spring Valley and Westwood High Schools and you'll remember, reminding you that NMC is a partnership with the Department of Defense. Um, where we have a focus on that uh, math and science initiatives, um, particularly increasing AP participation in those um, in those STEM related courses as well as English. Um, and so um, as a result of that, we have definitely seen an increase in um, the number of our students who were prepared to take AP exams that are traditionally come from your underrepresented populations of AP students as well as increased access to those most rigorous course offerings. We've um, also celebrated our um, very own um, BMC, uh, Gorapati, who was recognized, was a Spring Valley senior, graduated this year. Was also a twenty twenty U S Presidential Scholar. And in addition to that, we had eighteen National Mayor's um, Scholar Finalists uh, in our school district. We also had um, top five um, in SIC finalists with two of our schools, Pontiac and Round Top. We had two of our schools that were recognized as schools to watch. Um, reauthorization and initial authorization with um, Blithwood Middle and Muller Road. As well as several of our schools continue to be recognized by Magna Schools of America with the honors of this uh, Schools of Distinction. Um, including also Forest Lake and Spring Valley, where Magna Schools of um, Excellence were also given uh, to them as well as they received um, designation as excellence. And then Dr. Cappy Stat um, was the Magna Schools of America Region Four Principal of the Year. So can definitely congratulations to her. Those um, those accolades continue, personal accolades for our staff continue at administrative level. We had uh, Janine Tucker, who was a twenty nineteen, we are leading award winner as well as the SCAS A Lifetime Achievement Award winner. We had the SC Nurse of the Year in our school this year, as well as Dr. Twanisha Gardner, who was the um, SC Elementary Assistant Principal of the Year. Um, another, um, another very important, um, I I think recognition that we received this year as we look at the year review and that was um, Rissland School District two being named an AP District, um, named to the AP District Honor Roll. Uh, the AP District Honor Roll, we were one of only three uh, school districts in South Carolina to be named to this honor roll. Um, we had, one of the reasons why, several reasons why we were named was because we've shown an increase in, again, eight AP participation rate. But also access, um, particularly access to those underrepresented students. In addition to that access, we've also been able to improve or maintain our performance level. So as we were growing our AP participation, as in also including access, more access, we've also been able to maintain um, or improve our performance level, which is a tremendous testament to our teachers and to our students and our parents. So thank you all who continue to challenge yourself by taking the most rigorous courses um, possible. Um, particularly those students who traditionally have not been taking AP courses throughout their high school careers. This is followed up by some um, by evidence of, I think this has been asked multiple times, uh, or had been asked before, I should say. Uh, what's the benefit of avid in Rissland School District two? And so I was very pleased when we were recognized by avid. Um, and they shared this data with us. And the, what it demonstrates is that its data shows that a hundred percent of the students who were avid seniors, those students who graduated, who were, who identified as avid students. A hundred percent of those students met the four-year college interest requirements. Um, and seventy three percent of those students who were identified as avid students um, took at least, at least one advanced placement course uh, while they were in high school. So I think it's a true, it's, it shows that avid is well worth the investment uh, for our school district and something that we should continue to um, continue to strengthen. Um, we kicked off the. We kicked off the Premier One Hundred Summit this year. Where we have the initiative to try to hire one hundred males, minority males and males of color. And so the summit was very successful, I'm looking for the data at the start of the school year to see what, what percent. How far off we were, or did we achieve that, that initiative or that goal that we set for ourselves internally? So we'll see how that's going, as well as we participated in the Call Me Mister Hill Day. Where we had mister's, call me mister's from around the state here in Richland Two. Where we gave them a tour of our wonderful schools and facilities, as well as an opportunity to meet our teachers and students. And kind of interact with us on a personal level in an effort to recruit and retain those individuals in our school district. So now to the COVID nineteen information, and I'll be brief on this information, if you guys, we all remember. On March thirteenth through the eighteenth, we prepared to launch our e-learning, remote learning. On March nineteenth, we started, April third, first through the third, we were distributing our Chromebooks to our children in grades two through five. Initially, we didn't start that, we didn't start out with grades two through five, but by April first through third, we were doing that. April second through the fifth, we began e-learning for those grade levels, as well as our seniors began to complete, complete school on the fourteenth. We closed out the year and the last day of school was June fifth. I've had an opportunity since then, one of the, one of the things that's been most beneficial for me as a superintendent is. I wanted to make sure that as we were developing our e-learning platform and our e-learning capability. We were doing enough professional development for our teachers. So I participated in Ms. Hink's lesson plans or her lesson for students. And she shared this with us as a senior administrators, and I was, I was very pleased with the lesson that she had developed for our kindergartners. And was convinced that we were, we had a premier lessons for virtual, the best virtual lesson that we could possibly develop. In this pandemic, and so very confident and comfortable with that, confident and comfortable with that. Just some, some more, to end with some more data. We've served a total of three hundred and thirty-three thousand meals to June the fifth. We have eighteen outdoor Wi-Fi zones on campuses and five Wi-Fi buses have also been deployed to our communities for those students. And just as a reminder, our students still have their devices, we allow them to keep their devices over the summer. And this is just a recap of the task force that we put together in order to help us close out school, prepare us for graduation. To help us with the start of school and opening of school for especially, I work with our special education students. As well as developing a task force for our budget moving forward.
Thank you, Dr. Davis.
Where that concludes our, concludes our year in review.
Questions or comments from the board?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Mackey.
I just want to thank Dr. Davis for that comprehensive year in review, and it's not every single solitary thing you've done this year. This has been a tough year, this has been a year of unprecedented firsts in our nation. And we've managed to stay on course, to take the good with the bad. I just want to thank you for providing us the update, I can't go through each and everything, each and every item on the update, looking forward to September and kindness. See how that pans out, looking forward to that, but I appreciate what you're doing, I wanted to also say that I thank you for taking the time. To be accessible, there have been some questions about, you know, accessibility, transparency, all of our meetings are aired, are viewed, they're live now. All of our meetings are made available, they're screened, they're live now, I know that you get back with people when they call you, when they, when they contact you and email you. The, the business that we carry on as a board is made accessible to the board, for now, our situation is, is, you know, is a little bit different for now. People are literally trying to stay alive in this country and in this district, and you are still focusing on how to educate our, our students. How to be responsive to teachers, to principals, to our community, and a whole lot of folks that we have to be accountable for at this time. So we're not perfect, the situation that we're in is not perfect, but I just want to thank you for the overabundance of effort that you are putting forward. I appreciate that.
Other questions, comments?
I, I did fail to mention that access to that entire report is on, the board does have access to the entire report. But I, I didn't think it deemed it necessarily give you fifty or sixty plus slides worth of stuff today. So please access that at your leisure and should you have any questions, please feel free to follow up with me. I think if I'm not mistaken, Ms. Ruth, this is also available to the public and see the full report, is that correct?
Yes, sir, it's posted on board dot sol sixty or something forty, I can't remember, just a lot of slides.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, all right, Dr. Davis, next item on our agenda is eight dot four reopening of schools.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, members of the board, again, thank you all for sticking in here with us as we go through this information. It's quite a bit of information tonight, but I think information is worth your time and worth the, the community being made aware of what's going on. We have Dr. James Anne Shealy, who has been doing a phenomenal job with leading our reopening school task force. She's been, she will share some information with you regarding the task force, and as you can see from what she will present to the, you and to our community. You can see how much work has been gone into and how many people have been included in this process, if we've been deliberating and preparing to reopen schools. However that may look and here in the upcoming fall, so I'll turn it over to Dr. Shealy, Dr. Shealy. Dr. Shealy works best when.
Dr. Shealy, I'm sorry, you're gonna have to unmute yourself, it's not letting me unmute you, I'm so sorry.
No problem.
And if you want to adjust your camera just a little, if you could possibly turn your camera down a bit, we can't see your smiling face. Other way there, that's good, perfect. Say sorry about that, sorry, Dr. Davis, thank y'all.
Mr. Manning, members of the board, Dr. Davis. Tonight I will share with you an overview of the work of the reopening schools task force, which is divided into six sections. Define challenges and goals, task force framework, survey data responses, accelerate ed recommendations. What we've learned so far and our next steps. Our defined challenge is how will we logistically open schools in the fall in the safest manner? To ensure the most equitable learning for all students. We have three goals that guide our work, which Dr. Davis has shared with you during his COVID updates. Our task force is divided into four priority areas, safety, operations, academics and communication. Our work is guided by CDC, South Carolina DHEC, Accelerate Ed and state government. We have four different potential models, traditional, e-learning, hybrid and virtual school. We have five design teams that are working on hybrid models, and in your board information, you will find a complete list of the members of the design teams. Who represent a diverse group of collaborators, which include teachers, students, principals, social workers, nurses. Physicians and others with expertise in our areas of focus. Twenty percent of the design team members were teachers, and we had the additional advantage of having Mr. Patrick Kelly. Who served on our task force, as well as a leader on the Accelerate Ed Task Force. Currently, we have approximately one hundred members on our task force, and as Dr. Davis noted in our work session last week. Not only are we diverse, but we have been inclusive where everyone's voice is needed and heard. The board information that you received will be added to our website tomorrow, so that our community can see the immense work that has gone into our planning. As well as who has served on our task force and design teams. On June first, we launched our first survey with reminders sent on June fourth to anyone who had not yet participated. On this slide, you will see that we had an excellent response rate, we received just over fourteen thousand responses. Normally, our highest response rate is when we survey regarding the calendar, and those rates hover around eighteen percent. Here you see almost twenty-five percent for our students, forty-two percent for our parents and guardians, and forty-eight percent for our staff. In this next chart, you will see the three lowest comfort levels for our partners surveyed. For students was to maintain remote learning for the entire year. For parents, the lowest comfort level was to reopen school on August nineteenth, with all students following a regular daily schedule. With no personal protective equipment. And for staff, reopening school on August nineteenth, with all students following a regular daily schedule with no PPE. The highest comfort level during the week of the June first survey for students. Reopening school on August nineteenth, with all students following a regular daily schedule with PPE. For parents and guardians to maintain remote learning through the fall and to reopen schools in January with PPE. And for our staff, to reopen school on August nineteenth, with students on a rotating schedule with PPE. Two days in school and three days learning from home. In that June first survey, you'll see on this slide the percent of our partners who agree with the following statement. I feel that my child's well-being is being prioritized by district and school leaders during remote instruction. Seventy-nine percent for our students, eighty-seven percent for our parents and guardians, and ninety-four percent for our staff. This survey question on the next slide sought to seek understanding as to how our partners felt regarding students' well-being. Being the priority for the planning for the reopening of schools. Eighty percent for students, eighty-one percent for parents and guardians, and ninety-two percent for staff. Some of the community may wonder, why has Richland Two not finalized and communicated our plan? As one of the largest and most diverse schools in, school districts in the state, our goal is to follow an informed, equitable. And considered process for reopening. The South Carolina Department of Education Accelerated published their final recommendations last week on June twenty-third. From that guidance, some of the challenges we are facing include cleaning protocols. Planning for multiple reopening scenarios and contingencies to ensure the health, safety and well-being of all students and staff. Multiple approaches to reopening schools throughout the state due to COVID nineteen numbers and local conditions. And physical distancing on the buses and in schools. This afternoon, I have three examples of physical distancing challenges for you. This is a school bus that normally would seat seventy-seven children. The circles are where our children would sit when physically distanced. This seventy-six, this seventy-seven passenger bus is now a thirty-six passenger bus. Recently, Mr. Will Anderson ran a practice route, which normally would have taken approximately thirty to forty-five minutes. And with physical distancing took two hours, please remember that we triple route. This is a visual of what a classroom layout could look like, in this particular classroom, we could seat fifteen students. All facing forward and one teacher with six foot distancing. This next slide is a rendering of Blackfoot High School's auditorium. Under normal circumstances, we could seat four hundred ninety-six, with physical distancing, we are reduced to a seating capacity of seventy-seven. So what we've learned so far, Richland District Two Thinking Outside the Box Award is presented to a school administrator or team. To revamp a common practice into something new and creative, or start something new to overcome an obstacle. We're extremely proud to share with you that our technology learning coaches and our academics department earned this award this year. Despite being recognized for their premier work, we know that we have to provide additional support for e-learning. This summer, we have one thousand three hundred eighty of our teachers signed up for professional development in e-learning. And four hundred fifty-three teachers and administrators participated in Avid Digital Learning two weeks ago. We have to ensure that our students, families and staff have equitable access to technology required for virtual learning. We must develop and provide resources for our parents and guardians to better support them. We must develop and provide social emotional support and protocols. We need to expand our Richland District Two virtual school. And due to the ever-changing conditions of COVID nineteen, we have to maintain the life skills of patience and flexibility. As recently demonstrated by numerous districts postponing phase one of athletics, band and ROTC. Our next steps include, our goal is to stay with our adopted calendar and provide learning as scheduled. Our reopening schools task force is in the process of vetting the models developed and proposed from the five design teams. And should finish this week. Our next survey for students, parents, guardians and staff will go out no later than July sixth. And will ask participants to rank the four learning models, traditional, e-learning, virtual and the hybrid model. Ask about the challenges families face and their willingness to return to school. The data from this survey will help to guide our final recommendations as to how to reopen our schools in the fall. In addition, our HR department will facilitate a survey designed specifically for staff. That will go out no later than July sixth. We do not have a crystal ball, but we do believe that the data from the next survey will provide us different information than the survey on June first. It is important to note, on June first, the total number of confirmed COVID nineteen cases in South Carolina was twelve thousand one hundred forty-eight. Today, that number has tripled to over thirty-six thousand confirmed cases around the state. With nearly three thousand five hundred in Richland County alone. We will provide education for our parents and guardians to help ensure that they understand their model choices. And we will communicate our final plans to our Richland Two community in July. When you compare what I've provided to you tonight with the information in your board packet, I believe that you would agree that this is indeed an overview. Again, the complete report that you received, along with the survey data, will be posted on our website tomorrow. This picture was shared with me April seventh, after one of our school corporates. To bring us back to our goals and to our defined challenge, this is our why. I can assure you that we will continue to do our very best for all. Tonight with me, there are many of my colleagues who stand ready to be unmuted, as we are happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Dr. Holmes.
Thank you, Dr. Shealy, for a very extensive report, I appreciate it. I did want to make note that the report that you all sent out, I tried to click on some of the links such as the LSS review. Or the special ed link and it wouldn't open, so can you, somebody go back and see if those links will open? That's, that's one thing. And then the second thing I wanted to ask about was, and I think you kind of mentioned it, that we're not finalized. Because a lot of parents wanted to know why if they picked, picked the virtual aspect, that their child had to stick with that to the end of the year. But I, from what I understand, you will address that in July, is that correct, Dr. Shealy?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and then the last thing I wanted to know was. About the, the, the cleaning, if we open schools up, do we have sufficient cleaning staff and custodial staff? To meet CDC, EPA and OSHA regulations in, in larger schools, do we have enough staff already in place? Or will we have to hire more staff for that?
I'm gonna ask Mr. Anderson to unmute, he'll be happy to answer that question.
Thank you.
Yes, Dr. Holmes, we have been meeting regularly throughout this with our custodial provider service solutions. At this time, we have ordered already electro, electromagnetic sprayers for every single school. And we have also are working with them on all the supplies that they need. They are prepared to implement additional staffing if, if needed to just focus on touchpoints throughout the day. So with our custodial provider, we have a good plan in place, and we've also been working with our finance department and Dr. Harry Molly. On making sure that the CARES Act helps us cover some of the cost, additional costs associated with providing additional staffing. Additional PPE, additional cleaning supplies, et cetera.
Okay, thank you, and I did have one other question, I'm sorry, but have we also, Dr. Shealy, provided for? I know that the teachers have been trained in e-learning, but if we have to end up going to a model. Where we have to stay at home, for example, are we gonna have, if we open up, will the students have an opportunity to practice that? On a regular basis, and will there also be an opportunity to have some sort of virtual session for parents to learn? How to do these online accesses?
Yes, ma'am, we realized when we rolled out e-learning before that we need. Yes, ma'am. We realized when we rolled out e-learning before that we needed to provide more support for our families. And so that's definitely something that academics will be concentrating on, as well as Chukollin and the TLCs.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Shealy. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mackey.
Yeah, just thank you, Dr. Shealy, for providing, this is a tough spot that you all are working in. We keep talking about unprecedented conditions. I thank Dr. Holmes because I had some of the concerns that you have. Thank you for asking those questions. But one of the things I just wanted to comment and say that from a personal perspective, this is tough. I have gotten questions from parents who are leery about sending their kids back to school, and there are some parents who have been adamant about wanting their kids to go back to school. This is tough. I know that our new COVID numbers today were seventeen hundred. Yesterday, thirteen hundred lingering and above thirteen hundred, above the thousands every day. So there are people who are infected, there are people who are dying. This is a very personal situation. So I want to thank you all for what you're doing. There are lots of moving parts, and they keep moving differently every day. I do want to encourage teachers, community members, parents, who I know there are surveys that go out. If you have questions, you can, you can email them to us. You can call. You can call the superintendent. You can call staff members. It's being done right now. There are people who have questions and concerns and want to weigh in on the matter, and those questions and concerns are taken under advisement consistently, and would ask if you continue to do that. If you have questions, email them. You can call them. You can do that at any time, not just a board meeting. But I just wanted to say thank you for what you're doing. This is a tough, a tough spot. And the parents who call me on both sides of this issue every day are passionate about the way that they feel, for, against, and some of the fence they're passionate about the way that they feel. So this is just a tough situation, and I appreciate you giving us the stats and the data and the things that you're doing. But just from a personal perspective, this is tough. This is tough, and I just want to acknowledge that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mackey. Other board members? Ms. Augustine?
And I want to add to on Dr. Shealy's why. About three weeks into being out of school, my senior in high school daughter Caroline said, "Well, this didn't turn out to be about as much fun as I thought it was going to be. I'm ready to go back to school." With that said, thank you, Dr. Shealy, and to your whole task force for the hard work and the research that you've put into this. I know in the end, first of all, it's very fluid. We don't have anything set yet. In the end, not everyone's going to be pleased with whatever we come up with. But I do thank you and everyone for looking at all these different alternatives and doing your best to get our kids back to school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? It is interesting that the parents and the students had complete opposite answers. Students are ready to go back, parents were not. It was interesting that they, they were opposite ends of that spectrum, but just shows you how extremely difficult the job is. And certainly, the state released some guidelines on whether to come back virtually or whether not to, based off of numbers, I believe, Dr. Shealy, I saw from State Department. Richland County currently with the number of cases that we have, I believe, will put us in the high-risk category. And in this, Dr. Holmes, I think, mentioning, Ms. Mackey, we had over seventeen hundred cases in the state today with nineteen deaths. So it really is a ever-changing landscape with a lot of complexity. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Dr. Holmes.
I do have one other question. Dr. Davis. There have been several calls as to why teachers will not give, be given a raise and the budget is frozen. Can you just briefly give a answer to that so people understand the necessity of what we're doing?
Well, the, the budget is, that was a recommendation, of course, that came from School Board Association as well as State Department of Education, and it's also being shared that, that we have not received a budget from the General Assembly yet. We typically, our raises come from the, when we receive that money from our legislator, that's where we use that, that money that's allocated for teacher raises, comes from, from them. And so we are anticipating getting a budget. Everyone's doing a continual resolution. So we're anticipating getting a budget from them on, in October. Our plans would be then to at that time to, if we get those funds, and we anticipate hopefully getting those funds, and we will, of course, make it a priority. One of our top priorities is to compensate our staff. They've done a tremendous job as we transitioned from brick and mortar to e-learning, and they continue to be vital, vital, vital parts of the learning experiences for our students, and we recognize that. We would then work to retro, go back and then to make them hold a retro act that back to the start of the school year. Once we got the budget, the budget, the state budget was approved, and then we're able to approve our budget. Many staff, and, and I, I don't, I don't know if this is the appropriate time for us to really talk, because I think we'll end up talking about some of the budget concerns as we get in the man. But many people have not lived through or were a part of the two thousand eight recession and how that had a negative impact on teachers and schools. We don't want to put ourselves in a position that, you know, I know the statement has been, there have been several things shared about how we can do it, and I think those are, those people give good insight. But those are things we will take into consideration. But we have to, as school administrators, make some very difficult decisions and look at the larger picture. And oftentimes, they will equate, what we want to try to avoid, Dr. Holmes and the members of board, is that we, we as, as leadership, is we want to avoid this us versus them or this dichotomy. And I've shared that with you all before. That is a, that is a very dangerous place to be where people pull you into. If you don't do this, then you don't, you don't respect me, you don't like me, or you out to hurt me. The dichotomous thinking, or see it my way or it's the wrong way type of a situation, particularly when you're the one that has to make the decision and live with the results. And so we have to be very careful with that. But we're examining all possibilities to make sure that we're able to compensate our teachers appropriately. And it's no one fighting harder for teachers to not think this board, and I think this intended in this administration.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. I just, I knew that, but I wanted the public to be able to hear your answer because we all know that everybody on this board, including yourself, we do work hard for teachers, and we want them to feel appreciated. But thank you for the answer. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Other questions or comments on this item? All right, Dr. Davis, our next item is another COVID- nineteen update. I don't know if you have additional details to share.
No, I, I think I had a few things, but I don't think there's anything else in addition to touch on regarding COVID that has not been shared by Dr. Shealy. What I will do is take this opportunity to publicly thank Dr. Shealy and the team for working together, the same as it was when, when we were working on the graduation task force. These task forces have been central in helping us make the appropriate decisions as we move forward. One of the fortunate pieces of, of not having my assistant superintendents in buildings all day has allowed us to work together as a team at the district level to make decisions that impacts the district. And so having her and the other assistant superintendents who have been able to help lead these task forces, we've all been participating, but they've definitely been spearheading those things and then bringing those decisions to me. And I can say that they've done a phenomenal job of, of really thinking through the process, then synthesizing a lot of the information and presenting it in a way that helps us to have healthy critical discussions. These are not easy decisions. I read an article or read a quote or tweet somewhere where someone posted, and some of you probably seen it, if you're on social media, said that, you know, whatever decision we make, half of the people are going to be mad, half of the people are going to be happy, half of the people are going to support you, half of them will not. So whatever decision you make, be rest assured that it, it's probably going to have some, 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 some people won't be satisfied if you didn't make the decision that they wanted you to make. And so I think this team has done a phenomenal job of really positioning us to make the best decision as, for our students, their families, our teachers, and our community. So I applaud her publicly for an outstanding job for doing that, leading that team.
All right, thank you. Next on the agenda, we have item nine dot one, our draft agenda items. Dr. Davis.
Yes, let me see if I can get Mrs. Ruth to put display the draft agenda item for us, so that I can go through with you all.
Yes, sir. Give me just a second. I miss him coming.
That's all right. We want to make sure that the public gets an opportunity to see the items on the draft agenda, so I don't want to go over them if they can't see them.
Yes, sir. There you go.
All right. So as, thank you, Ms. Ruth. The Tuesday, July twenty-first board meeting is scheduled to start with a call to order and us convening into executive session at four thirty, where we have student appeals, if there are any, and right now, this is a draft agenda. I don't anticipate there may be any student appeals, but we hold this on here just in case something comes through, knowing how important student appeals are to you all as members of the board. Here, we also have student admission requests into the district's adult education program, and we will resume public session at five. We'll have our inspirational moment, approval of the agenda will be next. Approval of the consent agenda, which will be employment recommendations and district transfers, as well as our capital improvement update. We'll have our voting on executive session items. We will have, under new business, no action requested, policy proposal for BED. Slide back down, Libby, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. My mouse is messing up. There again.
BEDGA, which is board records, that's the request of information that we discussed previously from board members. We'll have a third nine-week discipline data report, a third nine-week discipline report. We'll provide additional COVID- nineteen updates. Draft agenda items will be brought before the board for the August eleventh board meeting, asked for the approval of those items. We'll have the board and superintendent comments in an executive session two, and voting on executive session two items. Should there be the need?
All right, board members, questions or comments? Okay, we'll move on to item ten dot one, which is approval of that draft agenda. If I can please have a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Ms. Mackey.
I move to approve the draft agenda items for the July twenty-first, two thousand twenty school board meeting.
Motion has been made by Ms. Mackey. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Shad. Open it up for discussion.
Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion to amend the draft agenda to include a vote to reinstate policy BEDH public participation.
All right, motion has been made by Ms. Agostini for a secondary motion to the primary. Is there a second for that secondary motion?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Elkins. Is there a, any discussion on that secondary motion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Agostini.
I just, again, want to reiterate what a wonderful job that Dr. Shealy and the task force have done. But for those that weren't involved in the task force, perhaps, you know, they filled out a survey, but I think it's really important with this time being so fluid that we get our community to participate in this conversation. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion on that secondary motion? Okay, with that, we will have the vote on the secondary motion. Tamika, do you need us to do a hand vote or a voice vote? Nope, there it is. So this is the secondary motion, correct? Yep. Did everybody get the pop-up?
No.
All right, let's do a hand vote then. Everyone in favor of the secondary motion or a voice vote? Everyone in favor of the secondary motion to the primary, say aye.
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 Okay, everyone opposed? Okay, so did I get the, is there any extensions? All right, so that passed unanimously? All right, so the secondary motion passes unanimously, so we will now vote on the primary motion with the, with the secondary motion that includes the policy discussion for open, for public participation. Is there any further discussion on the primary motion now with the secondary motion attached? All right, with that, if I can have a voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, any opposed? And motion passes unanimous. All right, we will now move on. We have another action item under eleven, eleven dot one. Dr. Davis, if you'll give us some background.
Yes, sir. Mr. Manny, Mr. Chair, members of the board, this is just a simple authorization that is granted to the superintendent every year that gives the superintendent the ability to apply for state, federal, and special revenue funds, program funds for the two thousand twenty-one fiscal school year.
All right, if I can please have a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Ms. Agostini.
I move to authorize the superintendent to apply for available state, federal, foundation, and other special funded programs funding for the twenty twenty, for the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one fiscal year.
All right, motion made by Ms. Agostini. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Shad. Is there any discussion? All right, we'll have the vote at this time. Is everyone getting the pop-ups for this?
Yeah.
Yes, I could say no. Okay, let's just do another voice vote. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Like sign. Motion passes unanimous. All right, at this point, I am going to turn the meeting over to Dr. Davis for board officers. Dr. Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. All right, Mr. Chair, members of the board, we are at the point in time in our board meeting, and it's a point in time in the fiscal year as we're transitioning, closing out one fiscal year, entering the new fiscal year. We have, we have slated for us to the appointment of board officers. And so we'll take each office by one at a time, beginning with the office of board chair. And so at this time, the floor is open for nominations for the position of the office of board chair.
Dr. Davis?
Yes. I think it's Ms. Mackey.
I want to nominate Mr. James Shad for the office of board chair.
So this time, we have Mr. Shad nominated as board, for the office of board chair. Are there any other nominations for board chair? Are there any other nominations for board chair? Are there any other nominations for board chair? Being seen that there are no nominations for board chair, the floor is closed for nominations. Mr. Shad, do you accept this nomination? Yes, I do. Mr. Shad accepts the nomination. Is there a second to this motion?
Second.
This motion has been seconded by Mr. Manny. So are there any discussion? Seeing there's no discussion, we'll take it to a vote.
Do you want us to do voice vote, Dr. Davis, since we have some technical difficulties?
I gotta pop up.
I think not everyone is, though.
Oh, okay, okay.
Are you okay, Dr. Davis, with the voice vote?
That's okay with the board. I'm, I'm okay with it. Since there's only one nomination, yes.
Okay. So are you asking us to vote all in favor now?
All in favor, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Raise your hand. Let me see, all opposed, nay?
Nay.
All right, if I'm correct, I have six one in favor of the ayes. Is that recorded correctly? Is that recorded correctly?
Correct.
All right, Chad, the 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 vote passes. Mr. Shad will now serve as board chair for the twenty twenty one fiscal year and school year. Congratulations, Mr. Shad.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next, we'll have opened the floor for the nomination of vice chair. Nomination of vice chair. Is there any nomination from the floor for the position of vice chair?
Dr. Davis, I nominate Dr. Holmes.
Sure, I think Dr. Caution Parker. Thank you.
Sorry, let her go.
All right. We have a nomination on the floor for Dr. Holmes to serve as vice chair. Is there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations for vice chair? Are there any other nominations for vice chair? Seeing that there are no additional nominations for vice chair, the floor is now closed for nominations. Dr. Holmes, do you accept this nomination?
I do. Thank you.
Holmes accepts the nomination. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Mackey. Is there any discussion? Seeing there is no discussion, we'll take it to a vote. All those in favor of Dr. Holmes serving as vice chair for the twenty twenty one fiscal year. Please signify by saying aye or raising your hands. Aye.
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 Thank you.
All right, am I seeing that correctly? I record a vote of seven oh. Do I record a vote of seven oh? All right, we recorded seven oh. Congratulations, Dr. Holmes.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
You're welcome. And now this brings us to the conclusion conclusion of, well, we have one more position and that's position of secretary. And so we're on the floor for the position of secretary.
Dr. Davis.
Yes, Ms. Maggie.
I nominate Dr. Cheryl Caution Parker.
We have a nomination from the floor of Dr. Cheryl Caution Parker for the position of secretary. Is there any other nominations? Is there any? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? That we have no additional nominations, floor is now closed for nominations. Dr. Caution Parker, do you accept the nomination?
Yes, I do.
Dr. Park is Caution Park has accepted the nomination and I get a second.
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 It's been privately seconded by Dr. Holmes. Now comes the question, discussion, is there any discussion? Seeing that there's no discussion, we'll now take it to a vote. All those in favor of Dr. Caution Parker serving as secretary for the twenty twenty one school year or fiscal year. Please signify by saying aye or raising your hands visibly so they can.
Aye.
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 All right. I believe I record a vote of seven oh. Is that correct? Have I did I miss anything? Did I record a vote of seven oh? That being case, congratulations to Dr. Cheryl Caution Parker on serving as board secretary for the twenty twenty one school year. Congratulations. And now that concludes the nominations for board officers for the upcoming school year. Congratulations to all our elected board officers.
Yeah. All right. Um. All right, we did not put a board superintendent comments. Dr. Davis, I've seen your hand in the meeting back to me.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Y'all don't laugh. All right, board and superintendent comments. I'm going to start with Dr. Caution Parker.
Um, I would just like to say this is this is coming from my heart, Dr. Davis. I have worked closely with four superintendents in my nearly forty years in Richland School District Two, and you are the fifth superintendent. And you are the one who has and will continue to face such challenges that none of us have ever seen before in our history. You are also, and I debated long and hard over this one because I don't like to do this unless I just really feel it's absolutely necessary. And I feel that we are at a critical point, and I'm just going to say it. You are the first African American superintendent we have ever had in this district. Which poses a separate set of issues, which I will not go into it this time, but I will in the future. I appreciate your tenacity to do what is right for the children, all children of this district. Your your professionalism, your honesty, your transparency, and your ability to see the big picture. And the many attributes of your leadership are just outstanding, to say the least. Please know that I appreciate you and your leadership in Richland School District Two. And we'll do whatever I can to help support you and to help you continue with this trip that you're taking down this road. In Richland School District Two. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Dr. Elkins.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Just want to say thank you to all of them who presented today. I really appreciate the presentations. Dr. Davis, I want to say thank you and congratulations on your contract being extended, but I also want to share some words to my board members. We were talking about the month of kindness being only in September. I hope this coming school year that as professionals. That we will work more with showing kindness each and every month, not only in September, but each and every month, each and every board meeting. And that not only would we show integrity and honesty, that we'll show respect for one another. I know that we are dealing with critical times and I understand that, but I hope that one thing as we move forward, that we'll respect. Each other and that we'll agree to disagree. And also, most definitely when we're choosing officers. I hope that we don't have those closed door meetings that we select officers and only choose who we feel that we like. Or who we want to be there and that we would choose who we think is the best candidate for the position. And not so much of who we like in closed meetings and that we will only just call certain board members to get their support when we're doing this. Because I was raised by my grandmother and I respect everyone and I want to show kindness. I'm gonna vote and show support for my leadership, but I hope moving forward that we will include in everyone. That when we're having these discussions on who we want to be chair, vice chair and secretary, that we'll have everybody at the table, not just a select few that we like. And as I posted on Facebook today, I feel that it's very important to just share with my colleagues. And that message is. We live in a world where we support Rome as right as long as it fits our agenda. Hashtag hot mask. I can would ask that you continue to wear your mask, be safe, and thank you.
You're muted, Mr. Manning. Sorry.
Ms. Agostini, sorry.
Thank you. Also, I would like to thank all those that presented today, especially Dr. Shealy for that comprehensive report. Thank you, Mr. Manning, for serving this past year's chair and congratulations to all of our newly elected officers. Have a great night.
Thank you. Ms. Mackey.
Have a good evening. I won't belabor my I won't blab my comments. It's been a long meeting, but thank you for everyone who presented. Dr. Davis, thank you for. Your efforts with Dr. Shealy with the task force. We know that you are the superintendent. The book stops there, although it's a huge team of people who are working together. Thank y'all for that. And I just wanted to make clear something. We are as board members, we're set. We are elected to set policy. Our job description is to set policy. We have one task. We hire and we fire the superintendent. We're not even here to micromanage him. We don't micromanage principals. We don't micromanage teachers. We don't micromanage employees. That's not our lane. Our job is to set policy. It's tough sometimes. But for the myriad people who call us, who contact us, who work with us, who work with the superintendent, who work with teachers, who work with principals, who work with parents. To make this district work and to help us do our jobs effectively, which is to set policy. I appreciate that. Y'all stay safe. The numbers, the COVID numbers are just, you know. Unconscionable at this moment, and we've got our own superintendent who's sitting here trying his best to give us a hundred and thirty five percent that he always gives us, and we appreciate that. But I hope that everybody will go home, stay safe, keep your loved ones safe. At the end of the day, this is about educating our kids. That's the end user. For the product we sell, but people are dying every day. People are dying literally every day. People are sick. We have atrocities that are going on in our country that are just a double, triple and quadruple whammy. So. For the big picture and the things that are hugely important, I hope that people will continue to be team players, to be compassionate. And to be supportive of the end user of the product that we are delivering, which is a quality education to our babies and the community that supports them. Have a wonderful evening and thank all of y'all for what you do, particularly Dr. Davis. And congratulations, Mr. Shad. Congratulations, Dr. Holmes. And congratulations, Dr. Cheryl Caution Parker. I know you will do a fine job as board officers. Bless y'all and have a good evening.
Thank you, Dr. Holmes.
I'd just like to say, thank you, everybody for electing us as officers. We appreciate that. And we will certainly work together as a collective to do the business of the district. To Dr. Davis, you are certainly a trooper. I know you don't feel well today, but you always handle yourself with grace and style. And class and most of all with intelligence. And I appreciate that about you, Dr. Davis. Also, I'd like to say to Mr. Manny, thank you, my seatmate. For always being my clown buddy, my leader, my friend. I appreciate your work as the now the former chair of the board. I appreciate everything that you did for the board. Thank you so much. And to our new chair, Mr. Shad. I'm looking forward to us working together and with Dr. Caution Parker and the rest of the board. I'm excited about what were the possibilities we have to face during this COVID season, but I know that as a collective, as a collective. We have the ability to work hand in hand and do the business of the district and not worry about the nuances of personalities and differences. So having said that, also, thank you, Dr. Shealy and Dr. Davis, your staff. We could not have done that, and that staff includes everybody, including custodians and and the cafeteria workers and the the after school people and the teachers, everyone involved. Because no one could have foreseen this COVID situation, but everybody in this district has worked effectively together. And I appreciate that. And to the parents and the students, hang in there. We got you. We're going to take care of you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Dr. Holmes. Mr. Shad, you may be the new chair, but you won't be the best seatmate. I'm just still calling it, so. Mr. Shad, go ahead with your comments.
Absolutely. Thanks. Thank you all. Thanks for everyone that that gave the presentations tonight. They were very comprehensive, very informative. Of course, we are in trying times and in trying times, that's where the rubber meets the road and you actually see the character of folks. And the strength of us. The Richland Two family is absolutely strong. And with any family, sometimes you're going to have folks that you don't agree with, but as family you resolve it, you put you keep the main thing, the main thing. And so I'm grateful by my colleagues to have selected me to serve as chair for this year. I'm grateful and congratulate Mr. Manning, Dr. Holmes and Dr. Parker for a great nineteen twenty year. I look forward to working with all of my colleagues on this board to continue to push Richland Two forward together. And I appreciate all that you all do. You know, individually as well as a group. And lastly, Dr. Davis, congratulations on your distinguished. Rating by this board. It is absolutely. Right. It is absolutely appropriate. Given what you have done and your team has done, and I know you will agree that it's you're really just a reflection of the team that you have put together and all the hard work that they have done. And. I'm grateful that we've extended your contract for a year. It shows our confidence in you and the direction that we are going in again together. We are definitely in uncharted waters and as you said earlier, we're not going to be able to please everyone. We know that. As the chair going into this year, we are not going to please everyone. But the hope is that we can either come to consensus or if we have disagreement, that we still speak with one voice as a family. Now. I believe. That this will be despite what we're going through with COVID. And with other things happening around this nation. I believe that we will remain unified. We have to. We have to make sure that we are leading the charge for everyone. Leadership requires that. We are all leaders, so let's continue to find that mantra. And keep the main thing, the main thing. Y'all have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Shad. Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Ms. Manny. I want to make sure I have the the right information up here to to share when he gave me this. Through a couple of things that I'll share, but I'll just read this. I'll share this information. You may all may be aware that the academic recovery camp funding, as you may have heard in the media reports, in the South Carolina Senate passed legislative legislation. That prohibits the use of the COVID release fund, release funds to cover the cost of our virtual academic camps or what we call A R C camps. That are going to be held this summer. Well before the state made this decision or released its recommendations for summer programs, Richland Two had already made the decision to host our summer programs virtually. And this was decision that was made. On my part due to the fact that our numbers in Richland County were already high. This has already been, this has been confirmed by DHEC. Now the DHEC has released what is considered high, medium and low infections areas. Richland County is labeled as a high infection area. And as a high infection area, you are not supposed to open your schools up. They're supposed to remain virtual. Or you're supposed to provide your services virtual. In the absence. In the absence of this global health emergency, traditional learning camp models are better for struggling students. We know that. However, our talented teachers and our instructional support staff are well equipped to provide quality learning experiences for our art participants. And so. Restricting funding to face to face instruction in a classroom will not only undermine the work that we're currently doing. For doing to safely deliver engaging and interactive virtual lessons to students, but it will put the well being of our students who benefit. From most, the most from academic recovery, summer camps at risk. So therefore, we have contacted our state senators and representatives and asked them to reconsider this restriction on on the funding. And so we're optimistic that that will take place, but I think it is important for our community to know. That we are going to move forward with our virtual art program, which is designated for our K through third grade students in reading and mathematics. And we're following the CD, we're following the DHEC guidelines as DHEC recommendations as we are in a high infectious area. And so that's going to, safety is going to come first. As we continue to work through the impact of COVID. Is having on K through twelve education, the district is announcing the inaugural inaugurals of school year. That we will become Richland to Richland School District Two e-learning school. For those of you who enjoyed a positive experience with e-learning, we are excited to share with you that one new option for next school year and beyond. So the Richland Two e-learning will serve students in kindergartens through twelfth grade as a comprehensive schooling option. And again, this is an option. Families who choose to attend the Richland Two e-learning will maintain will maintain their stay for their length, for the length of the twenty twenty one school year. And for the twenty one, twenty two school year and beyond, families can choose to stay e-learning or they may transfer their enrollment back to their zone school. And so, but we are attempting, we would like for them to be able to stay with the e-learning. Because we don't know where we're going to be in the pandemic and how things are going to be, so it wouldn't be beneficial to move around. To be e-learning and then come out of e-learning, come back to the schools and vice versa. So we want you pick a a a track. Whatever the options may be made available will be beneficial for everyone's health and safety that we maintain that throughout that year, but then give them the opportunity to re-enroll back in their schools the following year. For those who are unaware, Richland Two has had a virtual platform, a virtual school option since about two thousand. And so we've been in this about twenty years, but we have, and we've been steadily updating our virtual platform. It has been mostly. Available to only available to high school students, but we are looking to make this available to all students. From kindergarten up to twelfth grade. So far, we have seen some families that are interested or have shown an interest in this option. As we prepare for the opening of school. So with that said, no decision as we shared earlier has been made. On when normal operations will resume, Richland School District Two, schools and centers, but we are considering options for Richland Two reopening school task force and guidelines from the. options for Richland Two reopening school task force and guidelines from the state, um, Accelerate and Task Force. We'll be updating, updating you, the Board, on this information prior to sharing this information with the public to give you some idea of where we're thinking and what direction we're looking to go as we prepare. Um, but we're trying to move this as swiftly as we can in order to make sure that our parents have and our, and our teachers have an opportunity to prepare, uh, for the upcoming school year and whatever format we may be operating in. Uh, but it's important that we do not rush too quickly, uh, and make, um, an ill-advisable decision on how that should operate. There is this pressure, as you might all imagine. Uh, everyone posts everything about what they're doing, what they closed this, if they closed that, if they're opening this, and so it creates a sense of anxiety and rush. I need to know what we're doing because so-and-so may be posting that information. I don't know what their processes are, but I can, I can tell our community and our parents and our teachers that we will give you ample time to prepare, um, adequately. Is, is definitely what our hopes will be. Our summer meal distributions will resume on Monday, July sixth, from ten-thirty a.m. to twelve-thirty, um, uh, P.M. Monday through Thursday, and that will be until August sixth, so check details on the district's webpage. Um, I, I would like to take this opportunity to transition now and, and say thank you to our Board. Uh, publicly thank our Board for the support and for your confidence, uh, in me, um, as Superintendent, uh, by, um, through your evaluation as well as the extension of a one-year career, a one-year, um, on my contract. Uh, the distinguished evaluation, as I shared last year, is a representation of not just simply the superintendent, but it's also a representation of the staff that I work, I have the privilege and the honor to work alongside every day. I work with some of the most conscientious, some of the most detailed, some of the most thorough, uh, individuals that a person could collectively put together. Uh, I simply only take pride in being able to guide and lead those individuals by being courageous um, and by standing on what's right and what's appropriate, by staying mission-driven uh, and not, um, focus on things that are preferences, but focusing on things that are, um, that allow us to achieve the purpose of what we set out to do. Um, and I get energy and support from them. And so I've always been taught that when things go well, you look outside the mirror, outside the window and think all those individuals that helped those things go well, and when things are going wrong, you look in the mirror and you hold yourself accountable. Um, and I'm so honored and privileged to have, uh, an excellent team. And also is a reflection of, of the teachers in our school district. We can't accomplish anything without great teachers and great staff. And I'm so thankful that we have, um, teachers in our school district that are committed professionals, uh, to this educational process to provide a free educational experience for our students, as well as our community and our parents and, and what they bring to the table. Uh, and it also involves you, the Board, for setting policy, uh, and giving me the opportunity to, 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 to run, um, as I would say, with, with the ball. Um, you know, to run the plays, to call the plays, to run with the ball, and to trust that I, I will make the appropriate decisions, whether that's a pass or whether that's a shot. Uh, but that I have the ability to see the floor appropriately and make the right decisions at the right time. Uh, and not to, um, call a timeout every time I have the ball in my hand and I'm trying to make a decision. I appreciate that. And I don't take that lightly because I know other superintendents necessarily don't have the abilities to do some of those things, and so I thank you all for that. Uh, I, I want to congratulate our new, um, um, Board, um, elected officers. Know I'm here to support and work alongside you. Um, anything I could do to make sure that we are supporting this Board as a team, all the other Board members as well, that's my responsibility, and I look forward to doing that. I work alongside with Mr. Shad, um, um, Dr. Holmes and Dr. Caution Parker. Thank you to Mr. Manning for always being, um, uh, not just a good Chair, but a good, um, a, a good, uh, 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 friend. I've known James a long time, um, and I, I, I share with people, I share with, you know, I think sometimes people get misconstrued uh, about my relationships with this Board that is sometimes rubber-stamp. These Board members that you see support me to the public, these are the first ones to call me up privately and give me direction with no hesitation. They are quick to privately talk to me about things and to help. Um, and that's the way I've always been trained as a leader, uh, is that if you have concerns with those that you, who are reporting to you, that you privately, uh, give them an opportunity to correct those things, and it's not a public, um, uh, an ability to try to, uh, shame or dismantle or embarrass someone who has worked extremely hard, uh, at, at this craft. Uh, this was, as I said, when I took this position, um, a dream come true for me. I never thought in my life that I would be the Superintendent of Richland School District Two. I didn't even think I would be the principal of a high school in Richland Two, and it goes to what, uh, Caution Parker said. During that time period, this district was not ready for an African-American, a strong African-American male leader, and that's just facts. Um, and it's evident, and you can see the course of my career. Every position I've taken, there's been some sort of concern about black leadership, uh, whether it was at Spring Valley and my return back there, and whether it's whether about me taking over as Superintendent, do, do I have the mental, the faculties, or do I understand the culture to be able to do those things? And I guess that's just the black tax that you pay sometimes in leadership, but I'm willing to accept that because I have a supportive, a community. Um, black, white, Indian, Asian, boy, girl, this is a tremendous diverse community, and I am the most fortunate leader that I could possibly be because I have them of all, um, ethnicities and genders and sexual orientations or whatever you name, they are all part of my so, circle. And I am so thankful that I have such a strong, strong support system. And I appreciate this community for allowing me to serve them as their educational leader. Thank y'all so much for listening.
Thank you, Baron. Um, I'm going to take a little bit of a, a tangent here. Um, I want to thank Tamika Sherman. So today is her last official day with us, as our Board Secretary and employee in the district, though she will certainly be available to us. Um, she has to deal with all seven of us and the Superintendent. Bless you, Tamika, for doing that. Um. You've been great. Our first act, uh, certainly we had support from Georgette and Jill, um, but you're our first permanent Board Secretary, and so you've kind of blazed the way for that position and, uh, and how that works. So, thank you so much. I, um, your family and all the work that you've done, and, and I know you all have a big move in front of you. Um, and so thank you, uh, for your support, really, of the country with your husband being in the military, but, um, thank you so much for everything. You will be missed, and your work was greatly appreciated. So, thank you. Um, I also want to thank our, our Board Officers, uh, Mr. Shad as Chair, uh, Dr. Holmes and, and Dr. Caution Parker. I know you all will do a great job. I, this is my, um, third time as, as Chair, and, uh, I'm not sure whether it's by design or what, but I, I've been Chair during the Thousand Year Flood. Um, I've been Chair during another, uh, international incident, I'll call it, and I've been Chair during the pandemic now. So I've, uh, I, I'm not sure what that says about me or, or the design for me in life, um. But one of the greatest things that I've had the pride of being Chair was, um, what was Dr. Davis actually being part of your transition to Superintendent-elect, um, and, and leading us through the process of bringing you into the position that you're, you're in now and, and that role, certainly with support of the Board. Um, and, uh, and, and supporting you during Spring Valley, uh, your leadership there. I, I got an opportunity to be on the Board, and then certainly my friendship with you even before that. Um, though, as you say, I am quick to challenge you, um, when, when needed. Uh, but I do, your, your leadership is, uh, is definitely appreciated and, and respected, and there's many challenges ahead of us, but I have faith in you and your administration to, to handle that, and I am very proud to be a Board Member alongside of all six of my other Board Members and you, Dr. Davis, and your staff. Um, so I, I can't thank you all enough for your trust in me and faith in me to, um, to allow me to be the Board Chair for the last year and to, uh, to lead this group. So, thank you. And I will say, Mr. Shad, I gladly pass the, I gladly pass the torch off, so. I'm ready. Um, but, uh, anyways, thank you all very much. If there's nothing else at this time, um, I will have a motion to convene, um, the meeting.
Mr. Chair, I move to adjourn. I move to adjourn the meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Mackey. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Shad. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Pass is unanimous. Thank you all very much.
Have a good night.